Stay if you can, or at least stay as long as you can. And I just want to welcome everyone here tonight. It's gonna be a little loud, it sounds like. I'd like to say a special thanks to Ora, Myer, and Hardware for their community support of tonight's Conifer Area Council Town Hall meeting. And for those of you who have not been to a Town Hall meeting before, Conifer Area Council, we're gonna do a changing of the guards, so come on down and have a seat, everybody. Conifer Area Council is a non-political organization that does not support or hold any development issue, political agenda, individual person, or business. We've asked all of our speakers to include these values in their presentations, and to be nonpartisan, non-controversial, and to present just the facts. We also ask that you represent these values, so there will be no campaigning, or signing of petitions, or anything at the meeting this evening. There also will be no questions during the presentations, no questions or comments, but at 8:00, about 8:00, when we start the actual open house, all of the speakers will be here and ready to answer questions and comments and everything else. So, what is going on around here? First of all, I'd like to introduce Steve Harrelson, who is our resident engineer for CDOT, and he's gonna talk a little bit about things going on with CDOT. Steve?
Thank you. Just one big project coming up, it was actually a small project, we're going to rework that median at Shaver's Crossing. We're gonna extend the breast median about 200 feet up the hill, then put a painted median clear around the corner. That's gonna be advertised next week, so we would hope to start construction probably in early June. It should be fairly painless. That portion will largely be, you know, require some lane closures and shoulder closures, but no blasting or anything like that. And we'll try to do it, you know, not during the rush hour. Also with that project, we're gonna replace three concrete panels down the hill between, you know, on the concrete section, largely below windy point. We did that a couple summers ago, or a couple falls ago, where we, at the end of rush hour, we divert traffic to the other side. We remove the concrete, put in some drains underneath to stop the expansive soil, and then replace the concrete. And the concrete's cured and ready for the rush hour the next morning, we can do it in 20 hours or so. So we're planning to do that in three locations. Again, we're hoping that that's gonna be transparent to the traveling public. No other projects on the horizon. We've got a design for Pine Junction on the shelf should funding arise, but we don't have any funding anywhere in the near term. Nothing else going on on 285, so if you have any questions, I will be around afterwards.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, next, I would like to introduce our new executive director for the Chamber, Conifer Area Chamber of Commerce. Susan Beams is our new executive director, Susan.
Thank you very much, and yes, my name is Susan Beams, and I have the wonderful pleasure of being the new executive director at the Conifer Area Chamber of Commerce. And thank you very much for having me on this evening. First of all, I wanted to tell you that the Conifer Area Chamber is 282 members strong today. Three short of my goal of 285 members, so if anybody wants to help me out with that, see me right over there afterwards. And, but we are growing strong and doing a lot of wonderful things for our community. We have a lot of things on our calendar, but first of all, tomorrow night, we are cash mobbing Bailey. It is a promotion that we have to help support shopping locally. We're meeting at Aspen Peak Cellars at 5:00, and then we are going to unleash our mob on downtown Bailey. The merchants are all staying open late until 7:00. More Lumber is having a special 25% off everything you can fit in the bag, and that's a lot, and that's a bolt, so come down for that. Also, Peace Works has a boutique down there, and they're offering a 25% off their items. And a lot of the other merchants have specials, but it's really to support shopping locally. So all of you are welcome to come and meet us at Aspen Park, Aspen Peak, and we will mob downtown Bailey. We're also having a really exciting lunch and learn on the 29th, and this is gonna be at Conifer Community Church. We are pleased to announce that John Michael Keys of the "I Love You Guys" Foundation is going to be teaching about car paying audience, or how to seize your audience. He's using some science from how brain chemistry works to keep your audience, attention, and not put them all to sleep with your PowerPoint presentation that goes on and on and on. So that'll be an exciting lunch and learn. And then also our meetings, our meetings are on the second Friday morning of every month at 7:15 at Brooks Place Tavern. So you can come even if you're not a member, and we'd love to meet you and let you know a little bit more about what the Chamber's doing. Next month, we're also having a mixer at Bandemere, which is a mixer with all the chambers in the area. And that'll be a lot of fun because our members are gonna get to drive the cars too, so, I don't know, that sounds like a lot of fun to watch. And save the date, July 12th is our second annual elevation celebration on Sutton Road. And we've got music, and food, and fun for the whole family. So I hope to see you all there, and thank you very much for giving me a few minutes of your time, and I'll see you again next meeting. Thanks so much, and I'll be right back there if you have any questions. Have a great night.
Thank you, Susan, and welcome. We're glad to have you. Okay, next, we're gonna have Peter Bachman, Conifer Area Council Board Member, come up and talk about the development updates. Peter?
Thank you, Shirley. And the handout you picked up as you came in is our summary of the development updates, which we put together from the announcements that come from county planning and zoning. We try to keep only the current issues in here, so these are applications that are new or they're in a big process. We're gonna try to get a page on our website that'll include all the old ones, but that's gonna take a little bit of doing, all the ones that are pending. I would like to point out that on the top, there's a new issue, and this is Jefferson County Planning and Zoning. It's addressing accessory dwelling units, the ADUs, these are those mother-in-law units, or granny flats. They're pretty tightly restricted right now, and what you can do if you have an accessory building on your property, you can run somebody to occupy it. They're looking at loosening those up, and they're seeking input from the community. So you might wanna contact Heather Guthrie, she's here, and will be here at the open house, and you can address questions to her, and her emails here, and her phone number. They really would like input on this, to formulate the new plans or new regulations for this, to open it up. The only other issues that I see in here, also on that new issue, there's a little typo in there, there is no hearing in February. It's a bad date, it's a typo, it's taking an old document. Would point out that every now and then, there are applications that have been sitting there in limbo, or being held, and they'll rear their heads from time to time. An example is the Cottonwood Canyon Development on South Maxwell, has an own 90 date that had been sitting there, and it has now come back for it. Gone ahead and had hearings, it was approved, so this come out, and take a look and see what comes out. Would also like to point out, we have the dates for the slash sites in here, and we've got them both in front and the back, and they're contradictory, it's another typo. These are put together by community committee late at night. On the back of the handout for the slash sites, the Elk Creek Fire slash collection is June 21st, 22nd, Cold Creek is July 12th and 13th. We'll have updated ones on this on our website as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And next, we have Brian Mosby, who's the Conifer Library Supervisor, to talk about a few things going on, I think, coming up this summer. Brian?
Good evening. Okay, got a few things on the agenda here. First of all, it's never too early to start the heat about Summer Reading Club. It is for kids, teens, and adults. So we like to hit all of our goals, get everybody signed up in the community, get those goals, make Conifer Library look great to the rest of the libraries in the system. And with those, of course, are always programs. We have some programs coming up on 3D printing, optical illusions, bugs for nutrition, which I think you get to actually eat a bug, and magic, of course, some popular programs. One of the things that we like to promote also is homebound services in the library. If you know somebody who can't get to the library due to either temporary or permanent conditions, please have them, or stop by and get an application, or stop by at the library if they can get there, or have someone pick one up. And apply for that, we have volunteers who can pick out items, bring it to them, mail it to them, whatever they need, okay? It's a great service, no cost to you there. And we're in the midst of One Book for Colorado, so I'm giving out free books for youngsters, if you know youngsters. The library is one of the places where you can pick one of these up, I do have a couple more left, I've been giving them out to all the kids around here. We're also having a special celebration tomorrow night, 4:00, actually, tomorrow afternoon. It's gonna be a special storytime of Grumpy Bird and all his friends, so if you know youngsters, let them know. And let's see, back in March, our director did come around to some of the libraries and explain some of the situations going on at the library. If you are interested in the information, I do have this packet, it's a little hefty, it's their whole presentation they have on the challenges that the library is facing, and what the future may look like for Jefferson County Public Library. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Now, I asked Jen Anderson of Staunton State Park to come and talk a little bit about the park. She was unable to come tonight, but she did send me an email with all the information. So according to Jen, the first year of the park has been a great success. We have seen over 120,000 visitors since opening day, May 18th, 2013. We are well on our way to passing the estimated visitation of 130,000 annually. The Davis Dams project should be wrapped up sometime in May. We will refill and stock the ponds as weather and water rights permit. There are no additional construction projects planned for the immediate future. We do have, and we have received, funding from GOCO for Phase 2, the visitor center, and trails around the new Davis ponds. Extremely exciting. It is too soon to tell the exact timing and details of each of those projects right now. We are looking forward to our second summer. We are anticipating another busy season as more people hear about us, so get the word out. Please feel free to contact Jen directly at the park if you have specific questions. Staunton State Park is just one of the most wonderful places, just one of those places that we have in our own backyard, we are so lucky. So, anyway, next, I would like to bring Chief Bill McGlaughlin up, he's the fire chief for Elk Creek Fire Department, and he's gonna talk about the outlook for the upcoming fire season. Bill?
Okay, just a good, real quick update kind of on what we're anticipating for this year's fire season. You know, it's always hard for us to tell how a fire season's gonna be from year to year. Colorado can have very dramatic fire seasons unfortunately, as well as ones that are relatively quiet. And a lot of times, we can't really predict that entirely in advance, but we do have, you know, basically the information that we've got right now from the National Weather Service and the National Interagency Fire Center. Basically, at this point, they're forecasting that it's gonna be a very active season across the entire west. They're, you know, the forecast right now is that the summer is going to be warmer than normal in all the areas that you can see that are brown on the map, which accounts for a considerable amount of the country. And unfortunately for California, they're continuing to experience very, you know, dry, very warm conditions, and are predicted to continue. We're in a little bit of a shape as far as the weather forecast goes, just in that, you know, it is forecast to be probably warmer than normal, but not really at this point an exceptionally warm summer. So basically, the national map is looking like, basically, the entire west coast is gonna be, you know, have much elevated fire risk, as well as the entire southwest and extending into southern Colorado. Right now, they're basically giving us even odds of it being normal or above normal fire season for this part of Colorado. One thing that is impacting this quite a bit, you know, we are fortunate that the drought conditions here locally have... Quite a bit. Okay. But, you know, it is over most of the west that we're seeing continued drought conditions, and, you know, we're still remain just out of drought conditions in this area. Some parts of Colorado are still experiencing a fairly significant drought, including the southeast part of the state, where conditions are now being reported as worse than the dustball period back in the 1930s. So it's not really a great situation yet, just at this point, more or less acceptable. Another issue that we've been seeing across Colorado, and that has impacted a number of areas, has been various forest pests. You're probably all familiar with the pine beetle infestation that attacked much of northern and central Colorado, and some of the biggest fires that we've seen in the state have been burning through those beetle-killed forests. The beetles have slowed down largely because they've pretty much eaten all of the lodgepole pine, in, you know, the areas that are strictly lodgepole pine. However, we're now seeing, you know, over the past couple of years, increase in two other pests, the spruce beetle, which has really been impacting the southern areas, and the big West Fork Fire outside of Pogosa Springs last year, which ended up being the second largest fire by acreage in Colorado's history, burned through beetle-killed spruce. And then a third pest that we're seeing that unfortunately started to show up around here is the spruce budwehr. Now, the spruce beetle attacks spruce trees, the budwehr... The budwehr actually attacks Douglas fir, and if you drive around the community here, you'll see that a lot of the Douglas fir trees are now dying in this area. So far, it's not reached what, you know, we'd consider an epidemic level, but we are seeing a lot more dead trees in the forest over the last year or two compared to what it has been. And that's obviously impacted our local fire danger if that continues. So overall, once again, we've got a pretty active fire season anticipated nationally. We don't know what the Front Range is gonna do, and right now, as we're sitting right now, our fire danger is pretty much even to where it was in 2013 at this time. So unless we see a significant weather pattern shift between now and June 1st, we are gonna anticipate that there's a good chance that we'll see big fires in the area again next year, or this summer. You know, and one of the things that we're gonna recognize is that whatever happens this time of the year doesn't really impact the longer term. It's keeping us from having fires, you know, start early, like the Lower North Fork Fire was two years ago. But last year, we had our last significant snowstorm, May 9th. We had our first wildfire, which is the one there, that the Blue Bell Fire in Evergreen, happened at the beginning of June, like three weeks later. So it only takes that short of a window between snowfall and the beginning of fire season, unfortunately. So, couple of updates, I know there's been a lot of talk about the availability of resources in Colorado. Probably the biggest one that everybody's been following is the proposal by the state to purchase aircraft. And I did find out this morning that that has passed and is going to the governor for signature. And that will include... Very good news. That'll include $21 million that's going to purchase two detection aircraft that'll be sent up after lightning storms, as well as contracting for helicopters and the large air tankers. Right now, the state, you know, up until now, has had basically one or two of the what are called single-engineer tractors, the very small ones on contract. Starting with this summer, they're planning to have two of the very large aircraft available as well. So we're gonna have resources that we didn't have in the past. Unfortunately, the federal government, on the other hand, is still very far behind their plan to replace their air tankers. Back in, well, even 10 years ago, the federal government ran 44 air tankers for wildfires. As of last year, they were down to nine. This year, they're anticipating up to 10, so we're still basically running at about 25% strength. And we are expecting the season to be busy. Another big project that we've been working on ever since the Lower North Fork Fire has been a way to dispatch ground resources in Colorado to big fires more effectively, and, you know, it's really picked up steam after the Black Forest Fire last year. You know, with 500 homes being burned in that, and all of that being basically was the entire fire, you know, the state has had a very difficult time. So basically, after the Black Forest Fire, we tried to, or we've been working on a plan with Colorado Springs. Elk Creek Fire is very heavily involved in that, and three or four other fire departments, along with the state to put together a method to send fire engines to these big fires much more quickly. We're gonna be doing the first test of that system on May 3rd. And that's gonna involve most of the fire departments here in the foothills, as well as fire departments all the way from Weld County down to Colorado Springs. So that's been a big push forward that we've been involved in trying to improve our ability to respond to those incidents. And then finally, on a local basis, you know, thanks to the passage of the bill levy last year, we were able to purchase two new Wildland Urban Interface Engines, and those are in service, and will be available to increase our protection here locally, you know, for this fire season. We have two water tenders that are off-road capable, that are, I've also been ordered, unfortunately, they won't be here for this coming fire season. Last thing I'd like to point out, we've been working with a number of communities on the Firewise Communities Program. That's something we want to encourage with other communities. A number of the grants that we are pursuing in this time to do mitigation are available only to those communities that have Firewise Communities designation. And basically, that involves having, you know, neighborhoods get together and put their own effort into protecting their, improving their community. That's a program that we're trying to increase. And then the last thing with that is that many folks don't realize, we do have a tax credit here in Colorado for any mitigation you do on your individual homes. If you have any questions about that, please feel free to talk to me afterward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, Fay Griffin, Commissioner Fay Griffin was not able to make it tonight because of the emergency event. But we do have Commissioners Casey Ty and Don Rojer here, and they're going to be talking about issues relating to Jeffco and Conifer. And I think some of the things they're gonna be talking about are, gosh, marijuana again, we handed out our last meeting, Jeffco sustainability, permanent slash sites, and Jeffco advisors, along with many other topics.
I would, if the chief broke the computer. Angela, does this count? And she's already...
Well, Don, just second one thing on the fire thing is, be sure to sign up for Code Red if you haven't already signed up for Code Red. You get notifications from the sheriff's office or the fire department, you can get them online, you can get them on your cell phone, your landline. So make sure you sign up for Code Red. If you go to the Jeffco Sheriff's Office website, there's a link there, where you can sign up for Code Red, get those 911 reverse notifications. Commissioner Rojer's gonna sing another rendition of Route 66.
Well, that's coming up, I also want to mention, Shirley asked me to, real quick, there's been some discussions on adding additional commissioners, whether there should be five commissioners, right now we have three, two, and two more. So the board of county commissioners have not taken a position on that, and if you'd like any information, it's in the... They're grabbing signatures on a petition, but after the meeting, if you want any perspective on that, feel free to talk to me, either myself or Commissioner Ty. We would be more than happy to talk to you about that, but it's not in our presentation today. Let's get up, Don Rojer, we're the county commissioners, Commissioner Ty, we'll kinda tag team it here tonight, and hopefully, we do a good enough job. But if you have any questions, please feel free to give us a holler afterwards, we'll be here. Some of the issues facing Jefferson County today. We continue to have our budget challenges, you've seen that in the paper. If you go online, look at our budget, that is online, fully transparent, it's right there. You can see that we're pulling projected this year $18 million from the reserves. We have relatively flat revenue, but our demands are growing, and we'll get to that in a little while. Transportation needs are still there. We've unfortunately have not had the dollars necessary to go in and overlay and do some repairs that are needed because of the tough economic times. Road and bridge maintenance needs, growing major capital needs. With these times, with these budget times, we have put off doing capital improvement projects and directed those dollars towards mandated services that we have to do because the state tells us we have to do it, or the federal government says we have to do it. And those keep going up, and up, and up, more and more of those. And then flood recovery. Let's look a little bit into our budget challenges. When we talk about lack of funds, you know, in good times, other, you know, projects and/or services are added, and those dollars keep going up. Obviously, in slow times of profit and tax revenue, those revenue dollars tend to decline. The question is, when you look at the services... The question is, when you look at the services offered by the county, what we are doing, what's mandated, what's not, what's there? What do all of you demand? What do you want to see? And what are we able to provide to all of you? Also, we're only gonna, projected right now from the assessor's office, is we're only gonna see a 1% growth in property tax revenue. Now, keep in mind, residential property tax revenue is on a slight increase, however, commercial property tax revenue is actually, has decreased and has been very flat lately, lately, last couple of years. Just note, if you are a business owner and you play property, commercial property tax, you know this all too well, business property tax is 3.72 times more expensive than residential property tax. That is flat. That makes up a bulk or majority of our property tax income coming in for revenues for the county to do county business. Also, we have seen, we talked about it today, $1.9 million reduction for human services from the state to this year. That continues from years ago. It keeps, we keep getting cut. We keep having less and less dollars coming in from the state, from the federal government, but we're seeing an increase in our mandated services that we have to provide through bills being ran at the state level and also at the federal level. Plus, we're still seeing, they say the economy's improving, but we're still at record number of people coming into human services looking for assistance. Capital needs, as I spoke to, we have aging buildings, aging infrastructure. We've been, I wouldn't say ignoring it, trying to put that off, redirect those funds elsewhere, but there's only so long that we can put those repairs off and before we have to do that, for it's a huge crisis. When you look at our expected, this is 2014 expected budget revenues, you can see the big piece of the pie here, money comes from property tax revenue, residential and business. And as you go through, intergovernmental and all. Is that like five minutes for him now? I've already burned up my time, Angela. Oh, man. All right. So as you go through, I have copies of this presentation. I don't wanna eat into Commissioner Ty's, but real quick, flood recovery, we're working with FEMA, Homeland Security, the Colorado Department of Homeland Security to go through, working with the governor's office for repairs. I've been amazed at how well SEDO has done, especially in Cold Creek Canyon. And we were fortunate, in some areas, the storm tended to leapfrog as it went through, but we did have some damage up in Upper Bear Creek. Slash treatments, there was a discussion, slash collection sites, the dates are here, these are the correct dates. So if you wanted, also, an RFP went out in January to look at slash collection, and it was a holistic approach for slash collection and how do you treat it, process it, mulch it, turn it into energy, do a wide variety of these for, we had three bidders. They were, a team of county employees sat down, went through all those proposals, and there being one individual and a team. Sorry, Angela, I'm going. Are being asked to answer questions.
All right. So, real quick, there's a slide there back on, Robert, find out, Robert, near you. You can hit the website and call. If you see potholes, call us and tell us where they are, we'll come out and fix them. If you know where they are.
That's potholes, not potheads.
Potholes. Wes, can I, I want to talk about that, just, you know, we've talked about that for years, that's some western beltway. But one of the reasons I want to put this slide up, this goes into what Commissioner Rojer talked about, economic development. Up at the north part of there, by the northwest parkway, right near the interlocking loop, we have an airport, Rocky Mountain Airport, we have some land there, we have a development called Verve. And Verve is a development, the county owns the land. We're trying to recruit businesses to locate in the Verve area. We've got some exciting businesses that have contacted us that are at least looking at the property. Those will be jobs, that'll be revenue, if we can get some businesses to locate around there. I wanted to show on this slide, because it's really important that these businesses have good transportation. And right now, on the northwest part of the county, our transportation system isn't state-of-the-art. So we want to attract businesses, we gotta get state-of-the-art transportation. Planning and zoning, Heather's gonna talk about that, so I just, I'd probably get it wrong.
Chickens and bees.
Yeah, we can't chickens and bees now. Human services, Commissioner Rojer talked about the needs increasing, that's a big deal. I want to highlight veteran services. We have a veterans court that we're starting out in the county. If veterans get into trouble and they, it's not a real serious crime, there's an opportunity for them to get counseling and to avoid the normal incarceration, the normal justice system. Because these veterans have done great work for our country, we want to work with them. You have to qualify for the program, not everybody gets in. But it's a way to, you know, work with veterans and hopefully have a successful outcome for them. And that veterans court has just started in the county. Boards and commissions, we just went through appointing people to boards and commissions, but the, if you want to get involved, look at all the different boards and commissions we have. One of the new ones is the Sustainability Commission. We're gonna look at opportunities to find, take advantage of what's going on in the county as far as renewable energy, recycling, whatever it is. The Sustainability Commission's gonna look at that and see if we can, you know, leverage the power of all the different groups that are working on those kinds of ideas. So look, get online, look at all the opportunities to volunteer at the county. If you see something interesting, please apply. Marijuana, Commissioner Rojer gave the idea of getting a task force together to look at the marijuana issues and see what's right for Jefferson County. So we just appointed a task force to look at the marijuana issues and see, do we want to allow retail sales in Jefferson County, in the unincorporated areas of the county? Do we want to allow retail grow operations in the unincorporated parts of the county? This task force is gonna look at those issues, report back to the commission on whether or not, what's right for the county. Those meetings are public meetings. So if anybody wants to come and provide input, listen, be involved, you can. They meet on Mondays, and I think about two weeks, about two weeks, they'll start meeting. They'll have information on our website, but we want to find out what the county people are thinking for what's right for.
Thirty-one people applied, and it's a balance, for and against. We try to get it as a good balance.
That's right. And if you want to hear about more on the marijuana issue, we're having a telephone town hall. The number is 877-229-8493. We're also gonna call out and just ask people, what do they think about what's right for Jefferson County? You can call in and listen, or we will call you. If you want to get that number, you can write it down, or it'll be on the website as well.
And you can ask questions.
You can, it's interactive. Call in and ask us questions, give us your thoughts, whatever you want to do. So we'll do that. And then again, how to connect with Jeffco, we want to hear from everybody. So feel free to get on our webpage, feel free to call any of the commissioners, Fay, Don, or myself, and we'll be happy to talk to you, come to any of our meetings. So we always have a calendar published on our website.
Two hours and 10 minutes. Right, a two-hour presentation.
I'll be here, Don will be here if he has any questions.
And also, I just want to say, in the back here, we have copies of Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation annual report, an economic profile for the entire county, phenomenal information, the 23 accomplishment of the Board of County Commissioners.
Sure is why I need the hook.
And then, budget stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, so Don and Casey will be around afterwards, they've got all kinds of stuff, so be sure and go talk to them. Next, we have Heather Guthrillis, who is a planner at Jeffco, and she's gonna, she's actually been a member also of the Conifer Recreation Coalition. They are just finalizing the master plan on Project Place. So she's gonna talk a little bit about that and a little bit about the Conifer Community Plan update. Technology, I always mention, you know?
Shirley, as Shirley said, I'm Heather Guthrillis, and I'm with Jefferson County Planning and Zoning. I have the pleasure of talking to you about two exciting projects that are coming up. Well, one of it is near the end stages, but I'm able to talk to you about two projects tonight. First, I am a member of the Conifer Recreation Coalition's Steering Committee, and this committee was formed to do a Conifer Area Recreation Master Plan. This, late last year, let's see, I'm not sure if all of you can see, see those slides. Late last year, the Conifer Recreation Coalition collected a lot of community input to identify the unmet recreation needs in the Conifer area. Now, a recreation master plan is being finalized, so we're in the final stages of that, and it's gonna offer some suggestions for implementation, for implementation, for ideas, strategies for recreation in the Conifer area. The complete plan will be done in June 2014. The purpose of this plan was to develop the guidelines for how the Conifer community can expand and improve a wide variety of recreational opportunities, inside and outside, throughout the Conifer area. One thing that we do want to stress is that this is not another plug for a recreation district, we're not trying to do that. This is trying to do recreation master planning to see what is available currently and what is needed in the future. There are going to be three elements to the master plan, and this is a really unique plan in that two of the elements are in a plan form, and the last element, the communication media, is a website. So this is kind of different than any plan that I've really worked with before. There's going to be the priority initiatives that have been talked about with the community for Conifer Recreation. There's gonna be four toolkits in the master plan, and then there's gonna be that communication media. The priority initiatives, the four initiatives that were found through community input, are improved to improve communications and exposure of existing recreation opportunities. There are a lot of things that are out there right now, and people may not know about them. Also, to realize trail connections, there's some trail connections that really need to be completed, that could be very useful to the community. Expanded outdoor organized recreation, that includes hiking clubs and outdoor youth sports. Supports the development, promotion, and/or repurposing of community places. These are areas where you might be able to have a family reunion gathering or a wedding, something like that. The implementation tools, these, I think, will be extremely useful in this plan. So there's certain strategies that came out as being the priorities, and then there are the best practices. And this part of the plan will give ideas for how to implement, how to complete some of the ideas that came out of this planning effort. The communication media, like I said, it will mainly be a website that's going to be created, and that will provide the community with the initiatives and implementation tools, and it will also include a recreation map, recreation activity lists, and feature outdoor community events, all in one place. So right now, there's several different places, websites, that have this information, but this will be all in one place. And that will also be completed in June of 2014. So the Conifer Recreation Coalition has done a lot of work up to this point in time, and at this point, what we need is your help. We're finishing up the plan, and this is not a county-initiated project. I'm one of the representatives on the Steering Committee, but this really was a push from the community, and therefore, in order to implement this plan, we really need help from the community to do it. It's really essential in actually making this plan something that doesn't just sit on the shelf, but something that actually gets implemented and put into the community. So if this has piqued your interest, we would like you to contact us at coniferecoalition@gmail.com. Thanks. My next project that I'm working on for the county, so this is a county-initiated project, which is different than the Conifer Recreation Coalition, is the update of the Conifer 285 Area Quarter Plan. There is currently a plan in place, like Shirley was talking about, we have those plans at the back, and I'll be sticking around at the end to talk more about them. But we are just in the infancy of starting this project. We are using this plan right now, and it's been in effect in some form since about 1985. This plan gives future land use recommendations. So it doesn't change anybody's existing zoning, you can continue to do with your land what you're allowed to do under current zoning. However, if you want to come in and rezone your property, do something different, then that's where this plan comes into play. And it really influences how the future land use recommendations, what the future of land use recommendations will be. So it's a really important land use document that's used by our Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. The last time the plan was updated was in 2003. We're updating them again now, they're gonna be slightly different. So right now, it's a pretty thick document, and we have since, we have since the last plan, we've adopted a comprehensive master plan that has a lot of the general policies that relate to the entire county. Those are policies that talk about things like staying away from hazard areas or flood plains. What we're trying to do with these area plans now is to really condense everything into what is specific to the Conifer area. Those land use recommendations that are specific to the area, if there are any specific transportation improvements that are important to the area, or visual resources that people think need to be preserved. It's gonna get very condensed and very specific to the area. Also, another big change is that we've been seeing, we've updated, so far, we've updated most of our community plans and made them into area plans, and we have found that they are much shorter than what they were previously. There is, there's going to be a land use map that is much more specific than the current land use map in the plan. Right now, there's ranges based on slope and hazards, can range anywhere from five acres to 35 acre recommendation. We're going to look at all of those hazards and constraints and put them into a map and see, try to give a more specific density recommendation to give more guidance to people in the future. We're also updating the Evergreen Plan at the same time, so we might be looking at a boundary change between the Conifer and Evergreen Plan. So that's something that might be interested in. If you feel like you're from Conifer, but you're really in the Evergreen Plan, we're gonna be looking at that. We're projecting that the plan will be complete in December of 2015, so it's gonna start, we're planning on having some kickoff meetings this summer. We're planning on having about five to 10 meetings, and then ending it with public hearings before the Planning Commission at the end of 2015. I'll be sticking around, my cards are in the back. Please email me or call me if you have any questions or if you want to be involved in this process.
As Heather said, the original plan was done in 1987. We updated the plan in 2003, and we actually initiated that from Conifer, more than it coming from the county. This time, it's more the county initiating, less public process than we had last time. So, Conifer Area Council is again doing a community survey to get input from all of you regarding what you want. And John is gonna come up and just talk just very briefly about that. So again, we want your input, and he's gonna be talking about the survey that we're going to be getting out there in the next few days.
Thank you, Jerry. Real quickly, Conifer Area Council does a community survey about every four years, and we had decided we were probably gonna put it off for one more year, we did it in 2010. But when we found out about the update to the community plan by the county, we thought, you know, we really ought to do that survey now, it'd be a great way to get input into that plan. It's our plan, it affects us. So, look for materials and resources and announcements. We're gonna try and kick it off May 1. We're going to try and kick it off May 1. Run it for about a month. And it'll be electronic, but there'll also be hard copy of the survey. It's fairly long, about 40 questions. We're working on that now, but we're kind of excited about that. If any of you represent companies here, or banks, or service organizations, and we're trying to get out to all of these groups. And we have a short timeframe to do it. So please come and see me or Shirley after the meeting, and we can give you more information. But you'll start hearing about it probably in a couple of weeks, in the public. Thanks.
Okay, and now we're going to hear from Kurt Valentine with Malt Mountain Area Land Trust. They have been doing an amazing amount of work in, you know, getting land in the Conifer area. They're going to talk a little bit about that. It's interesting putting the pieces together, and I think that's, Kurt's going to talk a little bit about that.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Matt Ashley. He's on staff. We're both land conservation specialists with Mountain Area Land Trust. We have a board member, Janice Tang, and our ambassador, Fred Van Duzen. They're both landowners in the Conifer area that have conservation easements. So with that, we'll start the presentation quicker, back and forth. We're a local land trust. We were established in 1992. We migrated or matured from an all-volunteer organization to an organization with four full-time staff and six part-time staff. I'm a part-time staffer. We're a non-government, nonprofit organization that works with cooperating with landowners to place conservation easements on their property, working together to decide what is allowed on their property and what conservation values they want to protect. We're accredited with the National Land Trust in 2012. What does that mean? It means that we meet national standards, best management practices. We're financially sound, and we are in a position to provide conservation easements and monitor those conservation easements in perpetuity. So our mission is to save scenic vistas, natural areas, wildlife habitat, working ranches, historic lands, for the benefit of the community and to leave a legacy for future generations. Our service area started out to be Jefferson, the mountainous areas of Jefferson County and Clear Creek County. We, over time, added Park County, and recently, we just added Gilpin and Teller County. We have 65 conservation easements totaling approximately 20,000 acres. We just finished a comprehensive management plan, conservation management plan, and we identified priority areas. And one of our priority areas is the Conifer Highway 285 corridor priority area. Basically, it's from Marshdale to Conifer, Shakers Crossing to Shawnee, Pine Junction to Buffalo Creek and Foxton. So out of those 65 conservation easements, 36 of them are in this priority area, the Conifer area, or 55%. So the majority of our easements are right here in Conifer. 45% of the total acreage. And that's saying something because we have a lot of large properties down in Park County. So this is sort of the land ownership pattern. The malt conservation easements with the private landowners are in the red. Other protected lands like Jefferson County open space and Denver mountain parks are in yellow. And the opportunity for us to start putting pieces of the puzzle together are the green, landowners with more than 80 acres. The big block there in the lower corner, right-hand corner, is the Butterfield property on Foxton, Resort Valley Ranch. And some of this area, which I had a pointer over there, is the South Ridge Road area. And moving up is the Pleasant Park area. And we just added one out at Shawnee, which is the Long Meadow Ranch. So we're trying to put these pieces of the puzzle together to save those scenic vistas, the wildlife habitat, the working ranches. And so here again, the opportunity is, are those 80-acre parcels, or greater, in the service area. And in the past, we were pretty much reactive, and now we're going out and trying to contact these landowners. And we will be writing letters, making phone calls, using neighbors to talk to neighbors. But that, that's what we're trying to do this year. But let me explain the conservation easement process, or what are the benefits of the conservation easement? The benefits are variable. They depend upon the landowner's size of their property and location, the amount of development rights that they give up. And they have to have an appraiser, an appraisal, a before and after appraisal. And then there's some upfront costs. So what are the benefits? There's, the end benefit is a state taxed credit that you, that the landowner can sell. Normally, on our conservation easement, it's a normal, it's a net benefit to the landowner of anywhere from $250,000 to $350,000. We have several landowners that have done several easements based on the size of their property. So what are the benefits? It allows the current property owner to have a vision of how they want to see their property managed and into the future. So after they sell the property, leave it to their heirs or whatever, their wishes are monitored by Mountain Area Land Trust into the future. Besides the state tax credits, there's also federal tax donations that can be used over 20 years. And there's also the reduction in estate taxes, if you're worried about estate taxes. This picture there is that Long Meadow Ranch out by Shawnee, if you recognize that. So what are the public benefits? The Conifer Community Plan talks about maintaining the look and feel of the community. So it saves our scenic vistas, protects our natural areas, provides wildlife habitat. Since it, since conservation easement quote-unquote limit a certain amount of future development, it contributes to our community the way we kind of like it right now, or whatever, and it's maintained into the future. So in summary, if you want to find out more about conservation easements, we have a table over here, and it's time, and I'm done. Thank you very much. If you'd like to support us, we have a manual event, it's called Night in the Park, and it's on August 9th. All of her three sisters. Thank you.
And that is a gorgeous park, all of her three sisters. Okay. Well, next, we were supposed to have our State Senator Jeanne Nicholson and our State Representative Sherri Giroux. However, I know they're doing a lot of late nights at the legislature right now, so neither one of them were able to make it. We have our Sheriff's Department back here to answer any questions. We have all kinds of people to talk to. And I want to bring up a couple of events that will be coming up. First of all, Saturday, May 10th, is the Spring Pulling It Recycling Event. There are lots of flyers and everything on the tables back here. Saturday, April 26th, is the Night Health Fair at Our Lady of Pines Catholic Church. Also, April 26th and the 27th is the Mountain Area Home and Garden Show at Evergreen High School. Then Saturday, May 17th, is the Community Veterans Coalition Rendezvous. And then Saturday, July 12th, you've heard about it before, but it's the Elevation Celebration 5K Run. It's going to be just a, it's going to be so much fun this year. So we hope to see you at all of those events. Our next town hall meeting is the, I'm not sure what date, in September, but it's, watch for emails. If you are not on our email list, please get on that, because we will get information out to you about all the town hall meetings and anything that we're involved in. And thank you so much for coming tonight. I know that all the parents of the kids had all your seats there for a little while, but thank you for sticking around and being here and learning more about the community and caring about the community. That's the important thing. So, and last but not least, I would like to again thank Moore Lumber and Hardware for their community support of this town hall meeting, and Sharon Truitt with By Mountain Town for taping tonight. That will be on her website and ours for the meeting tonight. So thank you all for coming. Stick around, eat more cookies, get more water and coffee, and talk to all the speakers. Thank you.